Thank you, Mr. Ming. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Please continue.
Yes, sir. Just for the record, we are closing the executive session for items thirteen through seventeen. There's a motion on the floor by Councilman Mendez and second by Councilman Abdulaziz. And Councilman Abdulaziz voted yes, Councilwoman Cotton voted yes, Councilwoman Davila yes, Councilman Jackson yes, Councilman Mendez yes. Councilman Mims to close executive session.
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. The executive session is now closed for items thirteen through seventeen.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
We'll take item forty to forty-four now.
Forty-two, forty-four.
Those settlement, worker comp settlements.
Okay, sir. Okay, next item on our agenda on the non-consent agenda is item number forty. And item number forty reads, "Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Worker's Compensation Claim in the Matter of Jesus Days versus City of Patterson Law Resolution 22591."
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Davila. Roll call on item forty, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty for approval. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number forty is hereby adopted. Next item is item number forty-one, "Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Worker's Compensation Claim in the Matter of Louis Serrano versus City of Patterson Law Resolution 22592." So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call on item number forty-one, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty-one for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez, item number forty-one, settlement for Louis Serrano in the Worker's Compensation Claim.
Worker's comp, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number forty-one is hereby adopted. Next item is item number forty-two for Worker's Comp, "Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Worker's Compensation Claim in the Matter of Jonathan Palomino versus City of Patterson Law Resolution 22593."
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Davila and Mims. Roll call on item number forty-two, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty-two for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number forty-two is hereby adopted. Next item is item number forty-three. Item number forty-three reads, "Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Worker's Compensation Claim in the Matter of Melanie De La Cruz versus City of Patterson Law Resolution 22594."
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item forty-three, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty-three for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number forty-three is hereby adopted. Next item is item number forty-four for Worker's Compensation Claim, "Resolution Authorizing Settlement of Pending Worker's Compensation Claim in the Matter of Gregory Alston versus City of Patterson Law Resolution 22595." Is there a motion? So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item forty-four, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Roll call on item number forty-four for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number forty-four is hereby adopted. Perfect.
Yeah, let's take item forty-five. I think that's the only item.
Number forty-five. Is that the ordinance?
Harry has on the agenda.
Okay.
That's right.
Item forty-five.
Next item is item number forty-five. And item number forty-five, "Resolution Authorizing Use of the Competitive Contracting Process: The Solicited Proposal for the Management and Administration of Police Off-Duty Services, RFP Number 2022-63, Police Resolution 22596." So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mims and Mendez, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call on item forty-five.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty-five for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I put this item on regular, every question is on regular because I know that the idea is to expedite the process, the payment process, to our off-duty police officer. So let's take a look at it when we get the proposal. I just want to make sure that our off-duty police officer get a full amount of the hour that they work for and protect, you know, their salary. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number forty-five is hereby adopted.
Let's finish the non-consent agenda. We've got a couple of items left, Madam Clerk. Item forty-six?
Yes, Mr. President. One second. Next item is item number forty-six, "Resolution Authorizing Award of Contracts to Various Vendors for Request of Qualifications for Architectural and Engineering Services for the Department Division of Public Works, RFP Number 2022-55, Department of Public Works Resolution 22597." So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call on item forty-six.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty-six for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims, number forty-six.
So before a vote, I just want to say these are the type of contracts that we should be giving out. This is an award of contracts for a request of qualifications of the architectural and engineering services. So this provides oversight and it provides a level of structure and sets parameters around the work we're doing with all the money that we are spending. So my vote is yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number forty-six is hereby adopted. Do you want to take forty-seven, Mr. President?
Let's take forty-seven, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, the non-consent agenda, okay, is item number forty-seven and it's for first reading. No public hearing is required. An ordinance authorizing the City of Patterson to acquire real property designated as block seventy-three oh four, lots thirty-three and thirty-three point oh one on the tax map of the City of Patterson, County of Passaic and State of New Jersey, known and located at one sixty-three dash one seventy-seven Pennsylvania Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey. Economic Development. So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Abdulaziz, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on first reading, item number forty-seven, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty-seven for first reading, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number forty-seven is hereby adopted and first reading. Second reading and public hearing will be held at the next regular meeting of October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, at seven P.M.
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine?
Yes, Mr. President. Next item on the non-consent is item number thirty-eight. And item number thirty-eight reads, "Resolution Honoring Essence Carson for Contribution to Women's Basketball," sponsored by Councilwoman Cotton and Councilwoman Dr. Lysa Mims, City Council Resolution 22589.
Second.
I want to...
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilman Mendez.
I was looking for corporation counsel. He must have moved out of the room again. We're going to add Councilwoman Marissa Davila's name to the resolution.
Okay.
Sponsor, I mean.
Co-sponsor? Co-sponsor?
Co-sponsor?
No, all sponsor.
Okay.
Yep.
The sponsor?
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number thirty-eight for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Well deserved, a legend in Patterson. We're almost, we're about same age. So I was a wrestler and Essence was a basketball player. Every time I was on the back pages of the sports section, she was on the front page in high school. I was always saying, eh. Now I'm over here honoring her, so my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, Christchurch, and she honoring her, but I remember her as the basketball player. She went to Rosa Parks. She's a pianist. She plays the, yeah, plus volleyball, plus she ran track with my son for Eastside High School. But now she's working into the music industry and she's really gorgeous. She's working for Motown. So that's really a great career. So we just honoring Essence who played in the WNBA for thirteen years. I believe she had one championship, I'm not quite sure, but it's an honor because I remember her as a little one running track and playing basketball. So with that being said, and she played basketball for one of my favorite coaches, Vivian Stringer. I used to love watching her because she was number one. If anybody knows Vivian Stringer, I don't know, I remember her back in the day for Rutgers. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila?
It's an honor to support this resolution honoring Essence Carson, a graduate of Rosa Parks High School, a graduate of Rutgers and a proud Pattersonian. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Cotton and Mims, for adding me to support as sponsor. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Councilman Mendez?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Mims?
So I've known Essence and her family for a very long time, but I have to put this on record. The owner of Smoking Crab and Seafood in the mall, his daughter at one point has stage four cancer. And I remember reaching out to Essence Carson because she loved her. And I reached out to her and asked her if she would go to Hackensack Hospital and present a basketball with her autograph on it. And she did. I mean, it made her day. The blessing is, the young girl is still alive. She's in college. She's doing very well. And so I am excited that this is going, this honor for Essence, but I'm going to make sure that, who I adopted as my goddaughter, that she will be present so that she can be reminded of what she did for this young lady in Hackensack Hospital some years ago. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Udine?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number thirty-eight is hereby adopted. Item, next item is item number thirty-nine, "Resolution Celebrating Christchurch United Methodist's Fiftieth Anniversary." This is sponsored by Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Villas, and co-sponsored by Dr. Mims, City Council Resolution 22590.
Move it. Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mendez and Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item thirty-nine, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number thirty-nine for approval, Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Christchurch United Methodist will be celebrating fifty years on the corner of Fifteenth Avenue and East Twenty-seventh Street. So, and they're also listed in, as one of our historic churches that we have here in the city. We may have about ten of them, and they're one of the churches that is listed. So to be able to celebrate fifty years, to me, is absolutely wonderful. And I'm happy, and a lot of the members that I know of, but what I like about it most is that my son went to preschool there back in the early nineties. But anyhow, I want to say congratulations to Christchurch United Methodist for fiftieth anniversary of being here in the City of Patterson. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
So fiftieth is the number of Jubilee, but I have to give it up to Ms. Deborah Major, who is a staunch supporter of our church, and she's doing a phenomenal job. So Ms. Deborah Major, thank you for all you do, making sure that we got this to the agenda so that we can celebrate with you from this side on the dais and then in person at the event. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Udine?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number thirty-nine is hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Let's do item forty-eight and forty-nine.
Yes, Mr. President.
Then we'll go to first reading.
Yes, sir. Next item on the agenda, non-consent, is item number forty-eight. And next, item number forty-eight reads, "Resolution Authorizing Contract Extension with T.G. Neal Grand Hardware for Up to Ninety Days for the Purchase and Delivery of Hardware Supplies, Bid Number 21.09 for the Department of Public Works, Public Works Resolution 22598."
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Mims.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Jackson?
Council President, so Madam BA, is this, what were the other bids that were presented to?
At this point, our, oh, did our purchasing agent leave? He was just here.
It's Harry.
If we look, I'm going to pull up the resolution here.
We are rejecting...
I do know that the issue concerning this was that we have to have the extension because we are rejecting the bids in number forty-nine.
Right.
So if you look at number forty-nine, it has, two bids were received, and I think there was some concern about the pricing of kind of the lowest bid, and so they are, through the purchasing agent, decided to reject those bids.
So we had a, we had a bid that was substantially lower and we're rejecting it?
I don't know. I wouldn't be able to answer this question because this would be for the purchasing agent.
Very good. My concern, council members, is that there's, this entity is hitting us with absorbent prices and overcharging for quite a, you know, for all of these hardware items. And there's a lot of hardware items that we're picking up from there that the city could serve as well to get at a much more affordable rate. So we can proceed as you please, Council President.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty-eight for approval, Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Mendez?
No.
Councilman Mims?
So this item, so there's going to be two items. We have this item which we're voting on and the follow-up item. So because the second item that will follow this, we're rejecting bids because of what we received, we have to extend what's on the record because we have our mechanics and different departments that need supplies. So if we vote against the supplies, then we're going to be in a situation. So I have to support this because I don't want any of our equipment being out and we don't have the supplies to provide. So we have to put something in place to give a contract to someone until these bids come back. So Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Udine?
Yes, as Madam, sorry, Councilman Mims said that we have number forty-nine item, which is new bids are coming. We are giving them kind of time to continue their business, about three months. And because of this reason, I believe I should say yes. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is four in favor, two against, three absent. Item number forty-eight is hereby adopted. Next item is item number forty-nine. Item number forty-nine, "Resolution Authorizing Rejection of All Bids and Authorizing the Solicitation of New Bids for the Purchase and Delivery of Hardware Supplies, Bid Number 22.30 for Department of Public Works, Public Works Resolution 22599."
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Udine and second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item number forty-nine?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number forty-nine for approval, Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
To the members of the public, this is a clear example of failure of government. You have the open public bidding process where a responsible bid came in and it was determined that it was too low, that it's going to save you the community money, and it may potentially knock off one of the supporters of someone else who's working to funnel business from the municipality to people who are, who may have some connections to someone. But you have a responsible bidder who comes forward and is substantially lower, and we reject it in order to extend the one that's very much so higher. It just doesn't make any sense. My vote is no, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
Our resolution, number forty-nine, we're just rejecting all bid. I'm looking forward to have the discussion at the DPW committee meeting about the, when we go out for a bid, about different companies that are participating in those bids. So my vote is yes to reject all the bid.
Thank you. Councilman Mims?
So Patterson, you know, I have to read what's here. So the reason why they're rejecting it is because the bid specifications have changed. And so when you're, according to the procurement process and the law, when bid specifications change, you have to do a rejection of bids and go out to bid again. So it is the right thing to do. It is the law, and to vote yes for this is the law. So I'm going to follow the law. My vote is yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes, I'm here. We are seeking for the new bid, and my vote is yes.
Councilman Davila, we are voting item number forty-nine? Forty-eight, correct? Forty-nine. We did forty-eight already. Oh, yes. My vote is yes. Thank you. Mr. President?
Councilwoman Mims said it the best. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is six in favor, one against, two absent. Item number forty-nine is hereby adopted.
Let's do the first reading ordinances.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Second. Next item on the agenda is our first reading ordinance. It's item number eight, and it's for first reading, no public hearing is required. Ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with the Patterson Housing Authority for an office space at one sixty Ward Street, Patterson, New Jersey, Administration. So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Davila.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Mendez.
Thank you. Madam BA, on first reading, so we have the ordinance with a lease agreement of one sixty Ward Street. At the Finance Committee meeting, we spoke about the shared services agreement that we planned to put together with the Patterson Housing Authority. But we also discussed that we're looking forward to collect the garbage on separately of the Patterson Housing Authority. I think that we got to have a very good discussion in term of what type of shared services agreement we have, because we have, we renting different location from the Patterson Housing Authority. We paid, we paid their rent in those different location, and I think that that definitely have to change, especially with what I hear today, that we're moving into the garbage collection of the Patterson Housing Authority, have a separately route for that. That's going to, so we talking about addition of tax dollars that are going to have to be expended there. So I'm going to say yes on first reading on this, but I'm, on the Net Finance Committee meeting, I'm looking forward to see those number, how that share services agreement look like. Thank you, Council President.
Can I, um...
It's first reading.
No, we're voting.
We're voting.
We're going to vote.
Roll call.
We were, yes. Oh, I thought we were voting. No, we were in defense.
No, I'm just going to...
One second, Councilmember, one second.
Let me just say something.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, I just have one. Let me just say something. The Patterson is the only city in the state of New Jersey that still have a civilian, what we call civilian ceasefire operation. The only city in the state of New Jersey, and they've been struggling for the last ten years that I've been sitting on the city council. When I first came on, I made sure I became part of the ceasefire as a civilian part of it. So they've been riding around and they've been storing stuff in their house, and they've been storing it everywhere. They go to all kind of community events to share information with the community, encouraging the community to come out and to join the ceasefire organization. So with that, with the rent that, I'm just saying, they need to have somewhere to meet, they're meeting in all different places. COVID has taken a hit on everyone. We all have taken a hit with COVID. You know, you're meeting places, people not letting you come in their buildings, they're not doing none of that. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, I know it's not vote yet, but Al, you may vote.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. Roll call on item number eight for first reading, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
First reading, yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Mr. President?
It's for our ceasefire, three hundred fifty dollars a month, forty-two hundred dollars a year.[1586.41]
This first reading, yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Mr. President?
It's for our ceasefire, three hundred fifty dollars a month, forty-two hundred dollars a year. You get paid by grant money. My vote is yes.
Thank you. The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number eight is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading and public hearing will be held at the next regular meeting of October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two at seven P.M.
Item number nine, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next item is item number nine for first reading. No public hearing is required. An audience authorizing a long-term tax abatement agreement between the City of Patterson and Colts Arms Preservation Urban Renewal LP for block thirty-seven twelve, lot eight twenty-eight Administration. The motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Davila and second by Councilwoman Cotton?
Discussion.
Discussion. Councilwoman Abdulaziz?
Thank you, Council President. I want to, no, I want to put this on because there's some more information that just came that we received over the last week since workshop. And I have some, the pro forma that we received, council colleagues, I don't know if you also received this, Mr. Silva, did you give them the conventional taxes with not a three percent, a four percent that reflects the school taxes and not the two percent over thirty years that none of the taxpayers have received from the school district side? Madam BA, on the pro forma, when they look at, when you look at their pro forma, the total operating expenses, and we're all emailed this, and some of the questions I have, you know, when it comes to pilots, how it pushes the school portion and the county taxes off to the taxpayers. And the operating expenses year one is one point eight million dollars. Am I correct? Is that what we have, Madam BA? So everyone is on the same page? And it broke it down. So one point eight million a year, about three point two comes in. So I want the residents to see what these pilots are. So this project, three point two, and just want the record to reflect, this property had a fifty-year payment. So fifteen years before I was born, they had a pilot in nineteen seventy-two and they didn't pay school taxes nor county portions for fifty years. And now they're in front of us. Not ten, not fifteen, fifty, right? Just like we just celebrated Christ. When Christ Church opened up, they received the tax abatement, right? So they bring in three point two, doesn't impact the residents. Their rents will stay the same with a pilot and without a pilot, it will stay the same. Let's not be fooled. And the expenses here, I said, let me see the one point eight million. Who's the managing company? Who manages this property right now? Who?
Community Realty Management.
Community Realty Management. And are they affiliated with Hudson Valley Group at all? No affiliation? Are they a Patterson-based management company? No, it's all right. He answered it. So the operating expenses, so the net cash, I'm looking at, well, this is with the pilot. When we look at the taxpayers here, right? With a pilot, when I looked at their pro forma, let me pull it up with the conventional tax and the pilot tax. Yeah, they emailed it to us. So conventional taxes, this project with their expenses, how much debt? Actually, I do want you to come up here. How much debt does this property have? You could come up.
Come to the podium, sir.
Because I don't find that anywhere. Madam BA, do you know what the debt is currently on this property? How much they owe? What's the mortgage? No, 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 no. Debt service is a payment.
Okay, then.
I want to know to date, they bought in twenty sixteen. I want to know to date what they owe on their debt. The debt payment, the debt payment doesn't change for thirty years on this pilot. So what do we owe? What do they owe? No one, there's no documentation that was submitted to the city. The city, so we're given a pilot and there's no information what they owe. It just says what the payment is. So I want to know how much they owe. That's a fair question to ask, right?
Absolutely. Councilman Abdulaziz, absolutely. And just so you know, some of these questions were.
Well, let him come up to the mic, please.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
One second, one at a time, please. Yes, you have the answer for that or no?
I don't have the amortization schedule with me. It's one of those things we can send, but I don't, I don't have that. What our current debt is at this moment.
So, so, and I understand that, right? You don't know, but you're asking for a pilot, and I think Councilwoman Mims asked this last week, but even that's disturbing. You're asking for a thirty-year financial agreement and you can't, I know how much I owe on my mortgage, I even approximate how much I owe on my mortgage, right? You're putting a debt payment that doesn't change, doesn't change throughout the entire thirty-year payment cycle. And I'm here asking, Councilwoman Mims requested, we don't know what you owe. You may owe, you may owe a million. This debt service could pay something else off. I don't know what's paying off.
I can give you an approximate, but I don't know for sure and rather not tell you something I'm not positive for.
All right. And I respect that. Thank you for being honest, right?
Thank you.
But in this payment, with the debt service that I don't know how much they owe, the cash flow with conventional taxes, so let the residents know, cash flow, they're not breaking even, they're not losing money, right now paying what they, it's not, it's not like we're overburdening them with taxes. We're just, hey, pay your fair share, just like I pay my fair share, just like the eighty-two year old resident in my ward that pays her fair share, right? That's sent on social security income to pay her taxes. That's all I'm asking. Not asking you to do a little bit more. You still make a cash flow of two hundred thousand dollars a year. That's profit. That's profit. We're looking at approximately, and that's with a vacancy of five percent, looking at your appraisal, your vacancy was at ninety-seven percent, so which will bring your cash flow a little higher, which is two percent more coming in. That's almost twenty thousand dollars a year in profit. But they want a pilot so we could make, instead of twenty thousand dollars a year.
Money.
I'm going to bring it up now with the pilot. Now with the pilot, the cash flow will be four hundred thousand dollars a year. And the council colleagues, we talk about we want to upkeep the building. You're absolutely right. A landlord should upkeep the building. I look at their operating expenses and what they submitted in their pro forma. Every year, from year one to year thirty, repair materials and contracts, upkeep of the property, spending a quarter million dollars. That's in their yearly repairs, I'm assuming, right? It says right here, repair materials and contracts, right? What's that mean?
So Councilman, I'd like to address that, though, with the idea of the pilot that we're talking about, that does not increase the cash flow. And so it's the pilot payment that we're going to be making is the same pilot payment that we have now. And when you look at this, actually, more money does actually go to the city. So the cash flow does not increase.
Yes, it does. It says right here, with the thirteen percent AGR pilot, your cash flow is now three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in eighty, three hundred ninety-two thousand eighty-nine dollars. It says right here, year one. Year two goes to three ninety-three. Year three goes three ninety-four and it keeps going up.
I don't have the document that you're looking at in front of me.
Madam BA, it's right in front of us. Your cash flows.
But I don't know how the cash flow will go up. We're paying the same amount.
No, no, you know why the cash flow goes up. You're proving my exact point, council colleagues. You want to know why it goes up? Because you're not paying school taxes. In conventional, your money that you're supposed to be paying, that extra two hundred thousand dollars in profits, will go to school taxes. Because the conventional, here, I have it here, the conventional with the pro forma right here.
The taxes, the tax amount that's being paid stays the same.
Sir, that's on the pilot. I'm comparing conventional taxes, which you pay your fair share. Your taxes year one, if we don't give you this pilot, you pay six hundred seven thousand dollars and three hundred ninety-three, three hundred ninety-three dollars. With a pilot, your taxes will now be, the pilot, gross pilot, four hundred sixteen thousand. That's why your cash flow is more. And I agree, from that four sixteen, the city gets a little bit more. But now that two hundred thousand, which is not really two hundred thousand, because our school district raised more than two percent, just to let you know, we pick it up. The taxpayers pick it up. And that's what I want to make clear. So council colleagues, please look at this, this one in front of you, that the two percent that they submitted, and I want to put the numbers so the public knows what we're doing and what we're looking at here. The two percent is a hypothetical that we raise taxes two percent in the next thirty years, every single year, which is not going to happen. Just ten years ago, this council, this body, raised taxes twenty-nine percent. The school district just raised taxes eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen percent. So I said, give us a four percent, because some years are going to be bad. They're supposed to pay thirty million, two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars in taxes in those thirty years. With the pilot, they only pay fifteen million and a half. That's a fifteen million dollar tax break. Who picks up that fifteen million? That fifteen million doesn't just say, hey, we like you. No one pays it. The school district still bills us, we have to pay them. The county still bills us, we have to pay them. And guess who are the people that don't have to pay? These entities with the pilot. And I'm sorry, that's, that's the facts. I know you guys are trying to do good work here, but I have struggling residents at this point right now with inflation going on, the school district hitting us. This is something where I couldn't control. I got the state on my back telling us that we can't pass a budget without a two percent increase. This is a tax increase. The city may get their portion, but this is going to, this is a larger tax increase than a two percent on the municipal budget. These fifteen million, and now it's not only you, it's not, I'm going to wrap up, Council President. I want the public to realize, this is one pilot. Last week, we had another pilot that was worth nineteen million. Then there's another pilot coming up. Once you add all this up, we're looking at sixty million in tax breaks. One's enough, one is enough enough. People are getting pushed out of the city because of that. We call about gentrification. This is gentrification. Homeowners can't afford it. And when the taxes go up on the, on the homeowners and the landlords, the renters get the burden also. So it affects everybody. Thank you, Council.
Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Abdulaziz. We had, we had extensive discussion at the workshop as well. Councilman Udine, that's Councilwoman Davila. Then Councilwoman Mims.
Thank you, Council President. My council colleague already stated about fifty million dollars, which is, we are losing. But one thing I want to address here, that you said your annual, annual expenses, six thousand hundred fifty dollars per unit. Is it per year? Is it per year or is it two years audit financials? The email came from, the email came from the Vice President, Daniel Banker?
Yes. Council President, that, that isn't NW Financial. That's not the developers. But that amount is, it is based on their two years of their audited financials and that is an annual amount per unit.
And then this is what they provided?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, their audited financials, yes.
Based on that, it says that your per unit, you are spending per month about five hundred dollars for maintenance costs per month.
I can't answer that because I didn't provide this information. This came from the third-party consultant that is actually hired by the city. So I don't have that.
If I can, I'm going to make a suggestion on the floor and my apologies, I move this. I want to remove my motion to move it forward. And the reason I'm going to do that is although I had, you know, I was in the middle, you know, I don't appreciate that you're unprepared. We've asked you numerous times for information. I don't know why you're coming here. Every question asked by the council members, you can't answer. How do you want us to support, especially me, that was trying to give the benefit of the doubt to Colts Arms because you did not have fifty years of a tax abatement? You had six years of it, okay? And I know that you put in twelve million dollars to fix, but, but you're unprepared right now and I can't support this right now. Council President, I'm removing my motion.
All right, can I continue?
No, 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 no. I have the floor, okay? And if I'm removing the motion, then we don't need to have a discussion.
I move it.
I moved it.
You removed it. I move it now.
Okay, for the record, Councilwoman Davila.
Let it go for a vote. Yeah. And that's it. Let it go for a vote.
Councilman Abdulaziz?
One second, yes.
Mr. President?
Let Councilwoman Udine finish.
All right, so this is, this is what it says.
We're going to vote up or down, Councilman.
I mean, it is, it is, council colleague, this is in written form. It says this cost per unit, six thousand and one hundred fifty dollars per year. That says five hundred dollars per unit, maintenance cost. How does that make sense? The five hundred dollars per you need, you are spending for what? Does not make sense at all. It can be third party, fourth party, does not make sense at all. I mean, there's something, something is not right and you are, you are not able to even answer the question.
So the question is what maintenance costs go into operating a property?
Right.
And so if you start to look at it by unit, so if you have a landscaping cost, landscaping could be in the springtime, preparing, preparing the site. It could be in the wintertime if you have snow removal. It could be for plumbing repairs, it could be for extermination. There's numerous costs that go into it. As you know, as homeowners in the area, you know this, there's numerous costs that go in that we then have to pay. Now, the idea of, of the information that we have, I think we have, we have provided information at numerous times over the past thirteen or fourteen months since we first submitted the pilot application. But we can be able to answer these questions for what you're looking at if we have that document and we can see exactly what you guys have and.
Yes, sir. So this is what I'm stating here, that you're saying that you sent the application and this is what you are discussing here today.
That's not our work, though.
Now, what I'm trying to state here that the numbers you are saying that five hundred dollars per unit, which is, which is somehow, somewhere, is not right. Now, if you go back to the last, last week's meeting, you said average at one bedroom unit paying about thousand dollars, two-bedroom unit paying about fourteen hundred dollars. And if I, if I make it average twelve hundred dollars per unit, your income from the property should be about two hundred fifty thousand dollars yearly. And I'm just saying this because you are not, you are not able to state where the expenses are going, also gross income coming. But again, I'm saying this is, all the numbers are there. This is very generalized, nothing specific where the expenses are going, how you're using it. When you were saying that you were using for landscaping, this and that, that's very general idea, does not say where, how much you are spending on. Besides, when you're, you got the pilot, you got about a few years, you at least you got this. And all the money you saved maintaining property, one of the, you know, you know, condition you had, any, any property, any owner should do that. I understand that sometimes.
I agree.
All right, so I think, I think we should move for the vote.
Okay, Councilmember, let's, I mean, we had extensive discussion at the workshop tonight, so let's just vote up or down. Madam Clerk?
Take it to a vote.
Yeah, please.
Mr. President?
About the profit that could be made, given out the pilot, Madam BA, Corporation Council. There was, you know, the expenses of operating it, one point one million to maintain this building every year compared to how much rent you actually is collecting. Is it thirteen fifty per unit?
It's important to note, I mean, the pilot that we're, that we're requesting here is not something that's going to put more money into our pocket. It's the idea of extending a pilot that was already in place. It was in place when the building was purchased. We had come forth at that time to be able to discuss the idea of extending a pilot or giving a new pilot so that we would be able to obtain the proper financing. So we'd be able to go and purchase the property and put in this twelve million dollars. At that time, we were told to come back when the pilot was expiring, which is what this is right now, when we're coming back. So it's right now, we're back in the same position we were in sixteen or two thousand and fifteen, actually, and we went forward in good faith with the idea that we would be able to then come back. The projections that we're showing you, we will go cash flow negative at some point in time. It's not about making more money, it's about the idea of not going cash flow negative.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number nine for first reading. Councilman Abdulaziz?
We can't keep passing the burden to the taxpayers. There's not even that many taxpayers in Patterson that live in Patterson and these, with what we had last week and this week, that's thirty million tax breaks. Enough's enough. We got to stop this. My vote is no.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, I understand that, that, that it is going to go into the negative, whether it's going to be year ten, whether it's going to be year fifteen. How often does the government increase their rent that they pay to developers? Sometimes you don't see, you don't see it increase for five years, six years, that they don't increase that, whatever they call that cap or that level for one bedrooms, two bedrooms. But basically, this is, you know what? I think that you needed to bring it more clear and to break it down because I know you will be going into the negative five years, I mean, ten years, where you won't be able to upkeep, keep the building up with, with security, landscaping, just basic stuff that is going to be very difficult to. But I think that, that you need to really come back and get some better numbers for all of us to be able to see. I think that what, what happens is that, you know, I've seen abandoned buildings for years and years and years, you know, that, that had pilots that if it wasn't for a pilot, it would have been, there's still been abandoned buildings. So, but I think that you needed to come back now and just bring some more information to really show the breakdown of what, if it can go back to economic development. Because it's going to, you know, we've got quite a few pilots that'll be coming in now, maybe next four or five years, but that's going to be coming through. So with that being said, I'm going to have to say no for now. I need you to go back to economic development to show the figures because it is going to, it is, it's going to, it is going to break down. I think that they're looking at three hundred thousand now, but if the government don't raise that ceiling for rental, I mean, apartments per unit that they pay out, it is going to be into negative. So for now, I think that you should come back and go back to economic development and actually try to do your best to show the figures of what you're going to have to be paying out to keep this building up and running. Fifty years ago, ain't none of them council people sitting here now. I don't know where they at. No, they passed on, but what I can say is that some of us may be still here five years from now, ten years from now, I'm not sure. But if something has to give for that building, I mean, somebody might be watching TV now and say, you know, Councilwoman Cotton said that building is going to, in ten years, something's going to happen to that building in ten years. Something is going to happen. But for that now, I think you need to come back, I'm not, to economic development. With that back, Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila?
So, Councilwoman, it comes through finance, it goes through CFO, it goes, you know, NW Financials. Um, I, I think should, you should have, you should have been better prepared. I mean, you know, this has been coming back and forth to the Finance Committee. And through the CFO and the BA, you know, we had numerous conversations and part of the reason why, you know, as a Finance Chair, I said, okay, we're ready to move forward, all right, let's have the entire council listen to you because, you know, yes, we're a committee of four, but I think that the entire council should have the right to hear, what, you know, as an entity, what you'd like to do. But what's unfortunate is you haven't been able to build a good case and, um, you know, from not being with good representation, I mean, where is your, your lawyer, where is the other individual that was coming that had more information? I mean, to come before us now, you know, and I look at what Councilwoman Mckon says, I know the individuals that live there, I know what you did to the place, okay? I know that you've only had it for six years and your cash flow, I mean, to me, unlike, regardless of what any of my council colleagues say, to me, I felt like it made sense, okay? Because I feel that, you know, what's gonna happen to the individuals that live there? I know that some of my colleagues keep saying you can't throw them out, but guess what? If you can't upkeep the place, if the plumbing goes, if the HVAC goes, if, you know, you can't afford, you know, to do the maintenance and the outside, all of those things, I think about that, right? But I really, really feel, and you know, I, that's the reason why I was, you know, thinking that, you know, well, let's move forward, I have the right to vote yes or no. And I wanted to remove it because I wanted to give you an opportunity to, to, to get it right, but unfortunately, my colleagues here, you see how it's going, you know? So, with that said, I won't say no more, you know, I, I wish you would have done a better job, uh, in, in presenting this agreement today. So, you know, with that said, I cannot support it. My vote is no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, um, Mr. Cavalluzzi, I mean, I've had the opportunity to working with you for the past several years, been very responsive, I do know all of that, that went into the property, um, but it's, uh, um, my fellow councilmen have posted some very firm and solid arguments with, relative to the current condition of the city, the finances of the city, I mean, I'm sure you have another opportunity to bring this back forward again to see if there is a possibility and obviously you see how this is going. But based on the relationship and, and your willingness to work with some of the residents that have had challenges in the past, um, I'm not gonna stand against it, but I cannot support it. So, at this moment, Madam Clerk, I'll be abstaining.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been just recommending to pass and go for a vote on this item because we have a very extensive discussion. And I'm just gonna say that a couple of weeks ago, I got in touch with Corporation Council to try to create a legislation to stop those entities that apply for a tax abatement and then after 30 years, they're coming back to the city. Unfortunately, we cannot add that legislation to the building. But it is, there's no way that they could present this to make sense to the resident of this city of Patterson. We have family losing their property every single day because they can't afford to pay the high taxes that we have in the city of Patterson. That's a fact, that's a reality that we facing. We have family moving together to try to come out with the rent and with the taxes on the property to be able to pay those property. And now we have this, uh, building that have 50 years tax abatement. In 1972, they grant, they were granted with a 50-year tax abatement before I was born. Now, they tried to get 30 more years, which is 80 years in total. It just, I mean, we cannot do that to our taxpayer. Uh, those $50 million that they will not pay throughout the pilot, our taxpayer, they are the one who gonna have to come out with that money. And we are here to protect our taxpayer. And as a councilman of the third ward, we, we paying the highest taxes in the city, we all know that, but the entire city of Patterson is suffering. Every homeowner that we have in this city, they struggling with the high taxes and the lack of services that they getting. So, with that being said, um, my vote is no, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mendez?
So, to the public, I, I mean, over the last few weeks, you know, I've been very adamant about the pilots that are coming forward. And for me, it's all about needs-based assessment, that's number one. When you're coming for pilots or an extension, I want, I would like to see the entities take a good needs-based assessment of our communities to see what is needed in that particular area with the residents, so it's not just coming to get a payment in lieu of taxes or an abatement where they're paying partial taxes. I want them to include, like, some, some of the other entities that have come forward that are new, when they come forward, they're making sure they provide maybe rental space or partner with or adopt some of the football. When I see cheerleaders standing on Broadway trying to get money for cheerleading uniforms, some of that stuff should, it should be a part of the needs-based assessment that is done. I said this a couple of weeks ago, I asked last week for a few items, assess value, debt, I asked for all of that information, not here. I talked about, even though this, this is a 50-year tax abatement or pilot, which means they have not paid full taxation for 50 years. Although the entity that is before us, they have only had the building for six years, they have stated that they put 12 million into the buildings by floors and molding and sheet rock, this is what their outline said, we didn't have a pro forma. Now, we have a pro forma, but the pro forma was not even for 30, it showed 20, but you can do the estimate on what it looks like. But when it comes to these abatements, I really would like to see, and I don't know Corporation Council, if we can do this. If there could be some level of a confidentiality clause or a, a law or an ordinance that we could put on the book, if someone has a pilot or a tax abatement and they try to sell it within five to 10 years of the end, of the abatement, that they, they, like, like, there has to be something in place because what's happening is they're coming and saying, I wasn't the owner, I brought it six years and I want something. So, I'm saying to this council, I would like to put a, a law in place regarding that, that we have entities coming when the abatement is ending and they're saying, well, I bought it, I'm new, I should get it. 50 years plus 30 years plus our taxpayers, I spoke to a lady today, she's a senior, and I've been saying this every year with these tax increases, the budget and so forth that's going on, school taxes, everything. This lady called me today, she's a senior, she said, if 50 more dollars increases on my home, I have to move and I have nowhere to live. So, as we're sitting here, we have to look at all of these pieces that come before us, pilots and all these increases, everything. So, while we're here, we have to provide fiscal oversight and do fiscal judgment. And I've been saying this for the last couple of weeks and I wanna make sure the entities that come before us, please do your homework, and I'm gonna say it like I said it the last time, please don't insult my intelligence with these documents because I will not support it. Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Urdin?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, first of all, investing to our city. Patterson, I think pilot is not the only option for, for affordable housing. And when we give pilot or abatement as an incentive for the developers to come to our city and invest to our city, which is, we feel is important for redevelopment sometimes. But when coming for extension after 50 years, after 30 years, I think we are entertaining too much with abatement. Those people living in that particular property and if you feel that your affordability is going to be over if we don't pass this, this is wrong, still the owner has to maintain affordability of this property. That's a deed restriction, as Councilman, Councilman Miam said, that's number 10, I think deed restriction that's coming to our, coming to our, you know, board soon. And when we do this, it hurts the homeowners in general. But we still sometimes do that because we want redevelopment in our city. But we don't want to continue offering, you know, the abatement and pilot to one group of people when majority of them are going through crisis because you are taking the burden of the school taxes, county taxes. And as an example, that with particular property that we are talking about, that's, we are, we, the homeowners have to take the burden of $15 million if we pass this. Now, even workshop session, we talked about that the owner pays the water bill, sewer bill. As a homeowner, I have no idea that any homeowners ask their tenants to pay separate water bill or sewer bill. Because it comes along with the total rents. This cannot be an incentive. And with that being said, to save our homeowners in our city, my vote is no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Well, let me see what I could say here after all my colleague voting, but I just gotta go by the statement that you just stated, sir, that you, you probably gotta go cash flow negative. That you could probably go cash flow negative. But if I go to Newark, to the bankruptcy court, there's a bunch of cases there because they went cash flow negative. But that's our fault, that's not the fault of this council. Anybody that is involved in business and it's profit business, they need to know how to manage their cash flow and they need to know how to operate to make sure to survive in the project that they went to. Uh, in this case, you know, cash flow negative, then I had to balance that we could have a foreclosure flow in the city of Patterson because meanwhile, you taking that tax break, the residents of Patterson, 23,000 property beside that pay taxes is not getting that opportunity and they are trying to struggle, they're struggling to make sure they're not going in the cash flow negative. And some of them, sometimes you had to see them, and I know Council President, Council Meditis, Marissa Davila and Councilwoman Ruby Cotton and probably other council, see homeowners at Kumak picking up food because they don't got money to pay for a regular grocery store. You know, we are in a top position. Are we thinking your future benefit or we gonna think in the city future? And that's the decision that we had to take here, that's why you noticed the vote on my colleagues. Now, you know, when I was looking at the document the last time, when I saw that before after picture. Councilman's, 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 Councilman.
Continue, continue, sir.
I would like to have a call in the same time I have a call with you guys when I listen. So, when I look at the exhibit A, I thought that the property was in a before deteriorated position. And that threw me off when you say you invested $12 million to put the property up to date. In other words, your, your case to prove your case that you need that pilot, it was not to the intention to renovate the property, it's already renovated. There's two, there's two closures in pilots that I learned that is for new project and for deteriorated properties. And your property is not, is up to date. You have proved us that, in your case here, proving that you needed the pilot that is for maintain a cash flow in your, in your, in your, in your finance, you know? But last but not least, to the residents that live at the Coles Arms, and this is directly to the residents of Coles Arms, keep this in mind. You have residents there that have low-income housing tax credit that expired in October 31, 47. You have NJH MFA regular agreement expired in October 1, 57, 2020, 2057. HUD 236 use agreement expired in November 1, 2035. You have HUD project-based rent-to-assistance section A housing assistance payment contract that expired February 2036. You have Department of Community Affairs project-based vouchers, section H AP contract expires in July, in Ju- January 1, 2031. Why I'm telling this to the residents of Coles Arms is because you have that benefit in that project, in that building. The responsibility of the developer and the owners of the Coles Arms is to give you the affordable housing and to make sure that your property is up to date in code and is up to date to the residents of Patterson that live there that deserve a residence to live. So, based on all those agreement, you have a responsibility to keep and maintain your property up to date, no matter your cash flow goes down, up, whatever, you have to find the resources to give these residents of these Coles Arms a well living. So, saying that, I can agree with all my colleagues and saying what I see here as I speak. And if you planning to come back to prove your case and if it's the same status that you have here, wait until 2020, 60, probably, to make sure that your property is not up to date, probably you need, probably the pilot to move forward. So, saying that, my vote is no.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We, what we just talk about, um, increasing our ratable. By voting for any pilots, we are decreasing our ratables. And these pilots were created for new developments, um, as an incentive so they could come in, just like Garrett Heights. Remember Garrett Heights? Their pilots expired, we did not renew their pilots. Their taxes went up double. Garrett Heights came in front of us and their, their taxes went up double. And definitely, you know how I'm voting, my vote is no.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote for item number nine for first reading, there are zero yeses, eight no's, one abstain. Item number nine failed for first reading.
Madam Clerk, Council Vice President will take over the meeting.
Okay.
Council President?
Continue with the first reading?
Yeah, Council President?
Yes.
To my colleagues and to the viewers out there, I have noticed that we did a forensic study about this pilot, a deep one, to deny. Hopefully this council could do also a forensic study on the budget that the, that the administration gave us if it comes inflated. Because that also affect the taxpayer of the city of Patterson. Hopefully we do a forensic also.
Thank you, Councilman. So, Madam Clerk, let's move to item number 10 on first reading.
Sorry, yes, Mr. President. Next item is item number 10 for first reading, no public hearing required. An ordinance approving removal of deed restriction for substandard property located 11th Pro Street and designated on the Patterson tax map as block 48 or 2, lot 20, Economic Development. So, move.
Second.
Roll call. Discussion, Councilman Jackson?
So, what is the reason we're removing the deed restriction?
Councilman Jackson, if I may, Council President, as, as the Chair. Um, if you were here last week, uh, when it came through workshop, this went through committee as Council Vice President is on the committee. And this entity way back had a, a deed restriction. We received an email, an attachment to the paperwork from, um, last week from Barbara McLennan stating that, um, that we were able to remove the deed restriction because the property no longer, if I'm not mistaken, Madam BA, help me with this one, asking Mr. CFO.
It was supposed to be connected to a, a specific HUD funding, that never happens, it was never.
But that never happened, that's what it was.
And also, also, Council President?
Sorry, Councilwoman?
No, no, I'm just saying, so, so she did attach along with the information, um...
Very good.
Kind of wondering.
Councilwoman McCutten and Councilwoman Velez?
Okay, um, I know, um, you know what, I said I was gonna, I didn't get a chance to go there. But. Visiting, but now, uh, we, um, they normally have a sale first and then, then they want the deed restriction removed. Is this building, is this, um, property up for sale?
Yes.
Um, is it in there?
Well, I don't think that has anything to do right now in terms of selling the, the, in order for them to be able to make the sale, that they have to lift the deed restriction.
Yeah, so, so my question was before was that, um, on this property here, um, was it CBG money that was given to have this property?
No.
Councilwoman, that's why the letter from the, from Community Development, from Barbara McLennan, the paperwork is attached last week, it should be, it should be, if you go on your, um...
I have it, but it don't have no amount in here.
The tablet.
We don't have no amount. How much money was given to this property? How much money was given to this property? Now, they... How much money was given to this property? Now, they have to lift it up.
No, what happened is, let me explain. What happened is then way back. Yeah, way back, there was a deed restriction because Community Assets Preservation Corporation had a project that never came conclusion.
Who did?
Uh huh, correct. The Community Assets Preservation Corporation. So in that, the Community Assets Preservation Corporation purchased the property way back to proceed with a project that needed a deed restriction on it to not move forward. If they decide to sell it, they need to put a deed restriction. That never came through for many, many, many years, never finished the project. So now, the owner of the building desire to sell in the future that they also attest there's nobody out there waiting for buy the building. They just gonna put it for sale and they need to bring the property clean without no deed to be able to attract.
I understand that.
A purchaser. That's what it is.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number ten.
No, no, but my question is.
Councilman Jackson?
It's still, the question is, okay, he wants to sell the property. You're not saying how much he was. You don't know what they want to do with it. They don't have no idea.
It was his property.
So Councilwoman, and.
It's not a city property.
It's not a city property.
It's not a city property. We don't own that property. If you check that line.
We don't own none of them properties that we got money for. Somebody else owned them properties that we all got money for.
Council President?
I'm sorry, just, Councilwoman Velez, just give me a minute. Councilwoman, what is your question, Councilwoman Ruby?
I'm saying to you, I'm saying, okay, I'm gonna build three, I'm gonna build three two-family home. I got money from CBG. I never was able to build them home. So it's a deed restriction put on it. They gave me the money.
They didn't. You cannot, you cannot, if I may, uh, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Davila.
Okay. If they never got the money, why is the deed restriction on there?
Because whenever you go through HUD fundings, okay, automatically for affordable housing, there is an automatic deed restriction.
So they got money from.
Council President?
They got money from somebody.
Um, corporation counsel.
Thank you, Council President. And if I just may add some clarity to this, Councilwoman Cotton, I'll read an email that we received from Barbara McLennan. Says Community Development acknowledges that the city's home funds originally provided to develop this project, AKA Eleven Sprou Street, has long been reallocated to other home eligible projects. And therefore, there is no justification for an existing deed restriction on this property.
Right? They were reallocated, Councilwoman. He said they were reallocated.
Okay, they used it for something else.
Correct. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number ten.
Oh, yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Jackson has the floor after that.
Okay, yes, sir.
Move for a vote.
Just for a point of clarity, this property was not sold. It was just recently foreclosed on. So it wasn't sold as Councilman Velez talked about. This applicant is the one who just recently foreclosed on the property. That's it.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number ten for first reading, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Do I have?
I'll turn on.
You know what, that's why, you see, I told you he's a rookie, like, he, you know, he's a rookie over here sitting next to me and he won't, and then he won't even listen at that, you know. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila?
It is clear to me, and when we had the discussion in Economic Development and reading the email from the Director of Community Development, understanding that there's a termination of the affordable housing deed restriction that is something that is put when individuals apply for HUD funding, project didn't go through, therefore, we need to lift the deed restriction. And for this first reading, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
My understanding is that the deed restriction is with the property that we have, the property has to be affordable. If we remove the deed restriction, it can go back to regular market pricing? All right, any of my vote is no.
Councilman Velez?
It did restrict, I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna go there. This is the right decision to make sure this property is sold and fall into, probably into the tax revenues of the city of Patterson. You never know. So my vote is yes to remove the deed restriction.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if you go then now, there are the last eye, the last line of the resolution, you will see that, you know, through the House of Attorney Director McGore, we have proven the removal of the deed restriction on the lot. The property wasn't sold. So just go over the body of the resolution and you will have more clarity. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Let's move to item number eleven, Madam Clerk.
Hold on, Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
I go a little too fast for the clerk. Sorry, Mr. President. The vote is seven in favor, one against, one absent. Item number ten is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading and public hearing will be held at the next regular meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. Number eleven. Next item is item number eleven for first reading, no public hearing is required. An ordinance establishing always stop control at the intersection of Pennsylvania Avenue and Florida Avenue Department of Public Works.
Moved. So moved.
Moved by Councilman Velez, second by Councilman Abdelaziz. And also Councilman Udine. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Second by.
And second by Councilwoman Davila as well.
You should, the Councilman of the sixth ward.
You know what, I definitely, we have to acknowledge the Councilman of the sixth ward. Let me correct that. Moved by Councilman Abdelaziz, second by Councilman Velez, Davila, and Udine. But roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number eleven for first reading, Councilman Abdelaziz.
This is long overdue. As we repaved many of the roads in the sixth ward, it's caused a lot of issues with traffic, pedestrian safety, and now Pennsylvania Ave from Route eighty all the way down to East Railway Ave does not have a stop sign. It's recently repaved. People are speeding. There's trucks and numerous accidents. So I want to thank DPW Committee, Chairman Velez for taking this recommendation. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Velez?
Councilman Abdelaziz, the only issue that the traffic engineer brought up in this issue was that every time they gotta back up a truck into that loading dock, they be knocking down the stop sign. So make sure, make sure the company replace it back, okay, because that costs us money. But yes, this is due notice and when Councilman Abdelaziz brought it to my attention, I had to cheer the sentiment too. So the committee did a good job. My vote is yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number eleven is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading and public hearing will be held at the next regular meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two at seven P M.
Okay, so now we have number twelve, which is the last item on first reading. So, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, number twelve, it's the, it's a resolution for the amendment of the budget. So I will read it in the record first and we'll have a motion in second.
So moved.
Our finance, our finance director will read the amendments into the record. So the next item is item number twelve. And item number twelve reads, resolution to amend the calendar year twenty twenty-two budget, which has been approved but not yet adopted. Finance Resolution twenty-two five six three.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Davila?
Council President. Council President, I move item twelve.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
No, 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 no. Wait, 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 wait. Councilmembers, if I may, Council President, I believe that the CFO, because he has to read it into the.
Within the record. See, Mr. CFO?
So he will read now.
Section A, local revenues, ambulance fees from three million one hundred thousand to three million oh seventy-seven forty-six seventy-four. Miscellaneous revenues, section B, state aid, transitional aid from seventeen million eight oh nine six twenty-five to seventeen million eight hundred and ten thousand. Over section, total section three miscellaneous revenues from one hundred and forty-one million six twenty-four sixty-ten cents to one hundred and forty-one million five ninety-five one eighty-one eighty-four. Total, total amount to be raised by taxes to support municipal budget, section A. Local tax for municipal purposes, including the reserve for uncollected taxes, from one hundred and sixty-three million four fifty-three seven oh four two cents to one hundred and sixty-three million three twenty-four seven thirty-four eighty-five cents. Total general revenues from three hundred and twenty-one million five seventy-seven four twenty-three twenty-nine cents to three twenty-one million four nineteen five seventy-five eighty-six cents.
Okay, that's it?
No, you have another page.
General appropriations, section A, operations within caps, insurance from thirty-seven million ten to thirty-seven million six seventy-five. Section B, operations excluded from caps, insurance from nine hundred and ninety thousand to three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Section E, deferred charges, statutory expenditure municipal within caps. One deferred charges, deficit from sewer operations from zero to five hundred and sixty-six thousand nine sixty-four thirty-one. Deficit of operations from zero to one million five ninety-two five eighty-four. Section E, deferred charges, municipal excluded from caps, deferred charges. Deficit from sewer operations from six twenty-one five five seven ninety-one to zero. Deficit of operations, a million five ninety-two five eighty-four to zero. Section M, reserve for uncollected taxes from twelve million seventy-nine sixty-nine thirty-three to eleven million nine sixty-seven seven fifteen fifty. Total general appropriations from three twenty-one million five seventy-seven four twenty-three twenty-nine to three twenty-one million four nineteen five seventy-five eighty-six. Utility budget, section ten, dedicated revenues from utility. Deficit from zero to five sixty-six nine sixty-four thirty-one. Total utility revenue, twenty million oh sixty-six three forty-two to twenty million six thirty-two three twenty forty-eight. Appropriations for utility, deferred charges. Deficit of operations from zero to five sixty-six nine sixty-four thirty-one. Infrastructure trust loans from nine twenty-five oh fourteen seventeen to eight seventy-three seven forty-two twenty-seven. Infrastructure trust interest, zero to fifty-one two seventy-one ninety. Total utility appropriation, twenty million oh sixty-six three forty-two to twenty million six thirty-two three twenty forty-eight.
So thank you, Mr. CFO. Now discussion, Councilman Velez.
Okay, going over, why we have two section E and general appropriation? Why we have two section E and general appropriation? For example, in deferred charges, you going from zero to five hundred and sixty-six and the same amount, you have another section E deferred charges going back to from and then to zero.
One is from within caps and one is excluded from caps.
Excluded from caps, the same amount?
Same amount, yes. We were just moving it from one part of the budget to the other.
So in other words, we have, we amending for lower, not for higher then?
Where those two sections are exactly the same.
You're correct. So.
The six twenty-one, we're amending six twenty-one lower to five sixty-six. The other two amounts are the same.
So, so, okay, we, what we doing is amending the revenues at the same time amending what we gonna spend?
Yes.
Okay, so in expenditure, it's less than the past that you amending, right?
Correct.
Correct, okay. It does not reflect no tax increase?
A small, yes.
Okay. No, because we having a problem that you send an estimated tax bill. And I receive a lot of calls that the estimated tax bill was a little bit higher than the regular bill that they normally receive. So my excuse was, it's an estimated tax bill. Hopefully, that the next tax bill is already adjusted that they at least receive a reduction of that quarter. You understand? Because if you did a next, in a estimated tax bill based on the budget that we have not approved, okay, adopted, I hope that the next tax bill is adjusted to reflect a reduction in their taxes. Now, that's, that's what I hope. Now, the other thing is, a lot of, I receive a couple, because I'm not gonna say a lot, a couple calls that people have their taxes attached to their mortgage and they receiving still a bill to come in and pay it.
No, if I may, Councilman, Councilman Velez, the reason why most of the people in the city of Patterson, if you don't, if you still have a mortgage on your property, ninety percent of the resident, they pay the taxes with the mortgage together. So they receive, that's in term of an information, based on information. So they don't have, I receive a lot of, let me just finish. I receive a lot of those call, a lot of people have paid the taxes through the mortgage. They still have the receipt, but that's for informational purpose. They don't have to pay that.
No, the reason is that if you look at the bill or the tax bill that they receiving, it says in the top, if there's a mortgage bill on it, if there's a code, if it says code, mortgage code, and say zero, zero, zero. In other words, people that have, like, for example, I know a gentleman that has his house for more than twenty years paying through the mortgage, right, his taxes. He never received that type of bill. What I'm saying is, there's some kind of glitch that release the bill, no matter you in the mortgage or not.
No, but I think that it's important to let, Mr. CFO, I, you know, and after that we'll go from.
The only reason, the only reason the bill is different is because it's an estimated tax bill. So usually, you receive third, fourth, one, and second. You receive just an estimated for the third quarter.
I know. If I show you a bill right now that they sent me, it did not have the mortgage information. That's what I'm saying. They thinking it's a bill that they had to come and pay because a lot of them came here saying, hey, I pay my taxes through my mortgage. Why I receiving this bill?
Correct. And this information is very important because I have a lot of those call last week and to all the homeowners. If you receive that estimated bill, you don't have to pay that because you pay that a portion. You tax it through the mortgage when you do your monthly payment. That's important that the community knows that. If you don't have any mortgage on your property, then you have to pay your taxes. You pay your taxes separately, so, you know.
Councilman, it's understandable. But what about the same way they send the bill to you and did not say this is a duplicate bill because your mortgage is paying it? They didn't send the bill to the mortgage to get paid.
Council President, he should connect the homeowner with the CFO and they could address that issue.
I mean, correct. And there's always room for explanation, Councilman Velez. Roll call on number twelve.
Mr. President, if I, can I just put a word in?
Yes.
I have the same problem. I called my mortgage company. This is what happened. The mortgage company, even if they pay your mortgage, they want, they don't want the paper. They not accepting any paper documents. And that's why the owner gets that bill. I called and qualified that before. They don't want it, so it comes to the owner.
And through the history, the mortgage company, they never received those from the city. The city never sent any document to the mortgage company. That, that document, the owner, the homeowner is the one that received the document for, you know, prove of, you know, what they paying for.
I called my mortgage company.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mr. President and honorable councilmembers, this resolution needs six affirmative votes. So roll, yes, it's an amendment to amend the budget. We are not adopting, we are amending. Roll call on item number twelve for, to amend the item number twelve, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
No.
Councilman Mend, I'm sorry, Councilman Mims?
No.
It needs six votes.
Councilman Oden.
My vote is yes.
Um, Councilman Velez?
So, as, as CFO just stated, and, uh, clarify, clarify my, my question, this is not putting inflation in the budget, is, in other words, reducing in one item, and in, and balancing what they receiving revenues, to make sure that the budget reflect those revenue that came in. And thank you, Madam Clerk, to be my live experience in my, here, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Mister, Mister President?
I just, um...
What's the ca...
Five in favor, two against, one absent at this time, and we waiting for the president vote.
Sure, thank you, Madam Clerk, and, and before my vote, I would like to just, you know, Councilmember Les, um, the, I, I know you receive a lot of those call, all the residents receive multiple calls also, uh, but it's important to let them know that, they don't have to pay the bill, that bill, there's no need for them to pay, who, if you have a mortgage company, the mortgage company will take care, um, the taxes. Now, when the taxes go up, and, and you receive a bill from the mortgage company, um, that's when you have to pay attention, because the reserve went down due to the, the increase of the, um, taxes, so...
It's called the escrow.
Go ahead.
It's called the escrow.
It's called escrow, they do escrow now.
At some point, I always paid my escrow.
What about the property on escrow?
Thank you, thank you, and my vote is no, thank you.
So, Councilman Mendez, the vote is no. Uh, Mr. President is back. Mr. President, we are voting on the amendment of the twenty-twenty-two budget.
This is just not, just the amendment, we are not adopting the budget, correct?
This is amended.
Uh, my vote is yes.
Thank you. The vote is six in favor, three against, item number twelve, hereby adopted on the amendment. Public hearing on the amended and the adopted introduced budget as amended will be held at a special meeting on Tuesday, October fourth, twenty-twenty-two, at eight P M.
I know, it, it's good.
We just, we just go in order, Councilman, uh, second reading ordinances, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, so, they have the six vote in, six in favor, three against, so it's approved on the amendment, and then I read the other portion in the record.
He just wanna go early.
Madam Clerk, um, second reading ordinances in order, please.
Yeah, leave it to the end.
Yes, Mr. President, next items on the agenda is our second reading ordinance, and item number one for second reading, public hearing is required, an ordinance creating Patterson Code, chapter four-four-eight, to be titled All-Terrain Vehicle ATV Dirt Bike and Snow Mobile Regulation, sponsored by Councilman Mendez, co-sponsored by the remaining council members, City Council, ordinance twenty-two oh five nine.
So, move back, second.
Move by...
Uh, uh, question?
Move by, uh, Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Mims, Councilwoman Davila, Councilman Velez, discussion, discussion, Councilwoman Cotton, then Councilman Jackson.
And me.
Um, I have a question, Corporation Council, Madam BA, I happen to be walking down Market Street this evening, and there's a store right down the street, who's selling eBay motorcycle, what are we gonna, I mean, he have to have at least ten of them in front of the store.
Yep.
This store is so big, it might be fifty inside the store, wh, what are we gonna do? And we passing this thing here...
They just had a fire.
I know, but what we gonna do, we passing, we gonna adopt this, what are we gonna do about that store down here on Market Street, I don't know what to do. I, I don't know what to do, like, it's an eBay bicycle, mo, motorcycle, moped, or whatever.
E-bikes, that's all over the city, but what we gonna do with the e-bike, that with the store?
One, one at a time, Councilman.
No, no, I'm just...
Councilwoman Cotton.
You know, I just, you know, I, I, I hear what he's saying, you know, if we, if we're not gonna try to stop them from selling these bikes, how we gonna try to enforce this here?
Ca, Council President, if I may?
One second, one at a time, please.
Thank you.
Just...
One at a time, Councilman. Are you done? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President, so, Corporation Council, I have just a, some minor concerns with some of the language, I read back through NJSE, or NJ two C twenty-six dash one, which the, the, the portion that talks about, um, um, uh, what is it, forfeiture? So, I'm a bit concerned about, um, the forfeiture of items that have, uh, quantified ownership. Now, I, I understand if, if the, if the said items, um, there's no proof of ownership, or, you know, even if, even if there's an infraction, if someone breaks the law, does that give us the authority to forfeiture an item that was legally purchased? It's not like it's a, you know, it's a, a, a drug, it could be proven, most, most instances where forfeiture is, is utilized, and it says clearly within the statute, it has to do with, um, items that are prohibited by federal or state law, uh, a firearm, where that is not unlawfully possessed, uh, money that was utilized within a drug transaction, and so on and so forth. I'm, I'm curious, is it, whether or not this, um, this wrinkle will open us up to be subjected to lawsuit, based on if I, if I have, if, if a family member was utilizing, and it talks a lot about that, if they have to have permission from a family member to cross over private property, if a family member utilizes my personal property, and then the city decides to confiscate it, and I can prove ownership, I might, I have, I actually have a case of, of contention, you just can't destroy my personal property. The state and the federal law do not allow that, so, I'm curious of, uh, you know, the viewpoint that, that the legal department is taking when it comes to that.
Corporation Council?
Thank you, Council President, uh, and thank you, Councilman Jackson, for that observation, um, generally speaking, you are correct, um, but this particular ordinance builds off, uh, its sister statute imposed by the state, and the state statute permits, uh, local municipalities to enact this particular ordinance and forfeit these bikes, because the state has made, uh, determination that these motorbikes, if the local municipality designates it as a dangerous, uh, um, item, and we do in this ordinance, then it puts it in the same category as illegal guns, illegal drugs, and other things that are automatically subject to forfeiture, and, uh, an individual has no property right interest. So, we're able to enact this ordinance, because the state has already determined that if the local municipality deems it by way of ordinance, a dangerous instrument, it falls within the category that is, uh, there's no property right, uh, in it, for example, illegal money, illegal guns, illegal drugs, and therefore it's subject to forfeiture irrespective of whether or not the owner was operating it or not. So, this ordinance that we're enacting builds off the specific authority granted to us by the state, which moves these motorbikes and ATVs into that special category, where property rights cease to exist in that level.
But it doesn't list this item as any of those, those presumed items that is considered dangerous, and furthermore, with the, uh, the Attorney General Guidelines specifically outlining that the city does not have the authority to even, um, pull these vehicles over, or in, or, uh, make any, um, traffic stops, uh, I'm, I'm just curious of how that is going to, um, how that's gonna impact us when, um, you know, uh, whoever's involved decides to take legal action against the city, so, still, I'm not, I'm not quite clear or convinced of that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, uh, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Council President.
Yes.
Council President.
Councilmember Les, you could, uh, when you vote, you could, uh, make your statement, how about that?
No, because, yes, okay, I could do, uh, thank you, I could do the statement.
Okay, so, Mr. President, we had a motion on the floor, and you had a dis, and you had a discussion, so now we have to open the public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The second reading.
Public hearing is now open?
Seeing a ta, seeing a taxi driver, he don't want.
See, no one moved to close by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez, roll call on, um, closing the public hearing, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, roll call to close the public hearing on item number one, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, um, Corporation Council, I want to thank you for working, um, tirelessly about, on this legislation and modeling.
Public hearing.
Uh, so, move to close, um...
Public hearing.
Yeah, portion, thank you.
Public hearing, okay, Councilman Mendez?
Got your back, Councilman.
Councilman Oden? Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against, the public hearing is now closed for item number one, roll call?
Roll call on item number one, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, roll call on item number one for second reading, Councilman Abdulaziz. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Mendez?
No, thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, so definitely, I, I want to thank, uh, Corporation Council for working on this legislation, this is what we need, um, you know, to give the, the police department the power to remove those bike, and take those bike off the street, uh, we have so many of them driving around our city with no insurance, no registration, and, a, a, and just driving around the sidewalk, it just, it's horrendous what happened in the city of Patterson, I'm very pleased to sponsor this legislation, and we gotta enforce it now, the enforcement piece is gonna be the key for us to bring quality of life into those neighborhood, uh, that are being, you know, uh, disturbed with those bike during the day, during the night, and people driving around reckless, so without being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mendez? Councilman Oden?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
So, are we voting for this?
Yeah, we voted in second reading.
Okay, so, residents of Patterson, and, um, I just gonna say it this way, because, um, I'm true and real, so, we have long, but long, long discussion regarding the ATVs, the electric bikes, in committee meetings, the members of committee meetings for public safety are Marissa Davila, chairperson, Councilman Louis Velez, Ruby Kind, Lisa Mims. We have a long discussion with the director, public safety captain, deputy chief, what we going to do with the ATVs, a long conversation. I recommend, I meant Councilman Mendez, that he said that he's the sponsor, but I don't know where he was in that meetings, but, Councilman Mendez, good job, because you had the secret meeting with corporate council, and read all our minds in that meeting. I love my job, uh, but, ladies and gentlemen, the state of New Jersey, the state of New Jersey has regulation for the e-bikes, has class one, has class two, and both of those classes of e-bikes do not pass mileage of twenty miles per hours. Was, the problem is now that we have an ATV, electric bike, I say e-bikes, that goes over fifty miles, and so somehow the manufacturer, the state, had to step in and make sure that those bikes, or those e-bikes, are regulated based on the state statutes. Saying that, don't call me if your bike is unregistered, don't call me if you don't have a license endorsed to ride a bike, crying, take my bike out of the citywide, because I'm not gonna break the law the same way you broke the law, so, my vote is yes on this.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one against, item number one is hereby adopted on second reading. Uh, Mr. President, before I continue, if I may, I just wanted to, for the record, item number twelve, that pertaining to the budget, I just need to put something on the floor. Um, item number twelve was adopted, but the public hearing and the adopted introduced budget as amended, and the adoption of the budget, which I did not put on the floor before, will be held at a special meeting on October fourth, twenty-twenty-two, at eight P M.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council, Council President? Council President, may I for a brief moment?
Yes.
With the passage of, uh, the, um, ordinance regarding, uh, ATVs, I just wanna take a moment with your permission, and thank our intern, uh, Ms. Etihad, who is a, uh, intern in the law department, she's a Patterson resident, and she worked on, uh, helping move this legislation across, uh, the goal line, so, uh, I just wanna recognize her, and, uh, thank you for that opportunity.
She, she should be the sponsor.
Also, I want to thank Councilman Alex Mendez for, uh, bringing it to your attention, Corporation Council, so you could write the, uh, legislation.
And if I may, Council President, I think that, and, and yes, and, and yes...
Next, next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, Councilmember...
He was just give a kudo, so is it, so that's...
Next, yes, sorry, next item is item number two for second reading, public hearing is required, ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Patterson, County of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to authorize and approve the application for the tax exemption and financial agreement by and between the city of Patterson and Hamilton Square Urban Renewal LLC, finance ordinance twenty-two zero six...
So, move second, second.
That was by Councilman Davila.
Wow. Move by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Mims.
You got two more.
Councilman Velez, anybody else?
I'm one of them.
Councilwoman Cotton? Council, Councilman Mendez?
Open the public hearing, Mr. President.
Uh, public hearing is now open, anybody wanna?
See, no move to close.
See, now move to close, second.
Moved by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Davila. Roll call on closing the public hearing on item number two, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, roll call to close the public hearing, item number two, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
I, I gotta say something before my vote.
Ro, roll close.
No, closing the public hearing, but let me just say this, closing, I, I'll, I'll make my comment at the end, uh, let me say yes, uh, for closing the public hearing.
Good guy.
Public hearing, Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Oden?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Oh, yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against, the public hearing is now closed for item number two.
Roll call on item number two?
Yes, Mr. President, roll call on item number two for second reading, Councilman Abdulaziz.
So, I learned a lot about pilots for the last couple months, and I do, I do believe pilots are supposed to incentivize new development, if Sony wants to come in here and build their headquarters, things like that, create jobs, at this moment, I can't support this, my vote is no.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Davila?
I'll just say a few words, you know, on this, this entity, uh, has never had, or this property has never had a tax abatement or a pilot, uh, and this is a new entity coming into town, uh, and I'm looking forward to seeing the money that they will be inserting in each apartment, uh, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk, I, and I think that, uh, it's, it's, it's in relation with the last item, quite honestly, I think that before my vote on this item, and, and all jokes aside, yes, I spent a good amount of time having conversation with the, with the Corporation Council about this legislation, to stop this illegal bike, uh, and take it off the street, and, and, and I, I don't mind to be a sponsor, when somebody asks me, you are, can I sponsor the legislation with you, I always say yes, I don't have any problem, I'm not, uh, you know, for me, having my name on is not a priority, the priority is to make sure that we get a, that we bring law into order, uh, uh, into the city of Patterson, that's my, and, and, and to make sure that we bring quality of life into our community, that's my goal, and that's the reason why I'm so passionate, when I believe that legislation is needed, I work, I put my time, and until we get it done, uh, you know, so, but, for me, that's not as important as who is who, um, you know, just to put that on the record, and, um, item number two, um, this entity, they came, they've been partnered with multiple non, non-for-profit, uh, like the Grand Power Association, giving back to the community, doing the real work in the community, giving premium space to those non-for-profit to serve our senior, our community. giving premium space to those non-for-profit to serve our senior, our community. In this project, they partnered also with another non-for-profit, Yosoi AC, uh, a, a, an organization that is some, uh, putting all the effort into helping kids with the, uh, with disability, especially, um, because Lina de la Ora is the president of this, this entity. They've been here multiple times. And I do believe that they came back, you know, doing the right thing. Um, they never applied for any pilot. They want to renovate an entire building and making, make sure our senior get a proper place to leave. So without being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mims?
So, um, with this particular item, this entity did what I talked about with the last one where I voted no. What they did was they did a needs-based assessment for the particular area and the community at large. This particular project will provide, uh, housing for homeless, veterans, and people that are on the spectrum. Even goes beyond that point, and he's, they're providing space rental for Soldier On, which is a veteran organization, and as well as Yosoi AC, which does autism awareness. This is what pilots are for. When you're bringing in, you want to attract people to come in, not just for them to come in to benefit, but they need to take a look at the community at large, and they need to partner and collaborate so that everyone is winning, not just one particular entity. This project is a win for our community. It's a win for our non-for-profits. It's a win for people that need housing. It's, it's just a win. It's a no-brainer. And these are the type of projects that I will support because it doesn't just benefit the outside entity, it benefits the residents. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Urdin?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, residents, as you can notice that we denied an extension of a pilot application. The reason is we don't want to, we don't want our homeowners to take the burden. But we offer the pilot or abatement to the developers who are bringing, who are giving a positive impact to our community. The particular project, we discussed multiple times in the council meeting, which a little bit different than many other pilots, uh, came here to the council meeting, were offering to our disabled kids, offering to our senior citizens and our veterans. And I, I feel that is a kind of, uh, and, an example that how we can, uh, you know, give away pilot, which is going to impact positively to our community. I understand the tax burden of that part, but just to say that this is a new project. Never had pilot before, abatement before, and they came up with the idea that going to assist us, our, our people in the community. And my vote is yes.
Councilman Velez?
So let me clear the record here. This property had a pilot before. The new owner did not have no pilot at all. So let's keep the record clear on that. But as I say before, pilot are created for two things. New development and to project all indivi-, uh, properties that are deteriorated. In this case, the applicant had proved that 22 units need full renovation out of the 68, plus they got to renovate the remaining of it. But 22 units are, they didn't, cannot even rent it because they are too deteriorated. The second area that I want to clarify, the Councilman Mend, uh, you know, I had to mention his name because he just said that this is not going to create jobs, and yes, this project is going to create 50 to 100 construction jobs locally. The other thing is, um, you know, it's going to be brought up to, up to date. If, if we recall, this property, resident used to come way, way back, I'm talking about 12 years ago, saying that the roof was collapsing, the elevator was not working. So they got to put this building up today, and also they're going to be creating four unit ADA accessible. Parking, dumpster closure, you know, if you look at the project, it's near to the Great Falls, so they got to put it up to, uh, date in regard, regarding the history of the area. And not only that, I could attest that it's going to be well utilized by the resident and school number two uh, with the program that Yosoi AC and a program that is dedicated only for veterans that have served the United States of America. We're proud. It's called Soldier On. So I could go on and on. Last but not least, this developer is a win-win. Is under the new development management team, Win Development. And I think they did a win-win explanation of this project. Last but not least, they could start it with 8%, 5%, right, Councilwoman Mims? But they decide to start with a 12% pilot. So saying that, that is a win-win, like Councilman, Councilwoman a large say, because they are in the Win Development Team that is doing the other project, the grandparents raising grandchildren. So saying that, they are in the win-win war because that's the new section of the fifth ward that I am the Councilman. So welcome. My vote is totally 150%, yes.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Um, it's not a win-win. Taxpayer are the losers. You want to help nonprofits? We should do it through the budget, not sacrifice our taxpayer for an organization or two. That's just my, my take. This property has been, uh, had a tax, uh, pilots before, and they are in full taxation right now. By giving them, by giving them a pilots, we are decreasing our rateable. I'm not going to further, uh, talk about it anymore since it passed, but still, my vote is no.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is seven in favor, two against. Item number two is hereby adopted on second reading. Next item is item number three for second reading. Public hearing is required. An ordinance establishing always stop control intersection of 19th Avenue and East 21st Street, Department of Public Works, ordinance 22061.
So move.
Move by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez. Um, public hearing is now open on item number three.
See no move to close?
See, no one move to close by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call to, uh, close the public hearing on item number three, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Roll call to close the public hearing for item number three. Councilman Abdulaziz? Councilwoman Khan? Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Urdin?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
What is this for?
Closing the public hearing for item number three. Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. The public hearing is now closed for item number three.
Roll call on item number three, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Roll call on item number three for second reading. Councilman Abdulaziz? Number three?
That's same taxpayer, buddy.
Councilwoman Khan? Councilman Mendez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Urdin? Councilman Urdin, you're here, so.
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number three is hereby adopted on second reading. Next item, number four?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Next item is item number four for second reading. Public hearing is required. An ordinance designating Carroll Street between Fair Street and Harrison Street as a one-way street northbound, Department of Public Works, ordinance 22062.
So move.
Move by Councilman Mendez, second by Council...
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Khan, second by Councilman Mendez. Public hearing is now open.
See now move to close.
See no one move to close by Councilwoman Khan, second by Councilman Mendez. Roll call to close the public hearing, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to close the public hearing for item number four. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Urdin?
Yes.
Councilman Velez? Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. The public hearing is now closed for item number four. Continue, Velez.
Yes, roll call on item number four, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Roll call on item number four for second reading. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, thank you, Madam Clerk. This is going to help. Uh, we've been, I've been trying to get this. Thank you, Councilman Velez, um, for helping me and my members of the DPW Committee, uh, to make Carroll Street a one-way, uh, especially for school six. Uh, it would be a one-way from Fair Street all the way down to, to Harrison Street. So this is the safety for, the streets are so narrow now. And even though I put a stop sign, it was a stop sign, put a Hamilton and, and Carroll, but now Carroll would be a one-way. Just takes effect 21 days after we finish reading first, second reading. Madam Clerk, thank you, councilmembers for, uh, this is really the safety too for school number six. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes?
Thank you. Um, where am I now? Councilman Mendez?
No, I'm good, I'm good. Thank you.
We're voting on number four for second reading. That's Carroll. Thank you. Councilman Urdin?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Velez?
I want to thank Councilman Mendez because he really worked hard with me, this analysis with Ruby Kind. My vote is yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number four is hereby adopted on second reading. Number five, sir?
Item number five, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next item is item number five for second reading. Public hearing is required. An ordinance designating Auburn Street between Broadway and Governor Street as a one-way street southbound, Department of Public Works, ordinance 22063.
So move.
Move it.
Move by Councilwoman Khan, second by Councilman Mendez and Councilman Velez. Uh, public hearing is open for item number five?
Move to close.
See, move to close by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Roll call to close the public hearing, Madam Clerk, on item number five?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to close the public hearing, item number five. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Um, Councilman Urdin?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
That's the public portion?
Public hearing.
Oh, yes.
Number five. Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. The public hearing is now closed on item number five. Continue, Mr. President?
Yes, roll call on item number five?
Roll call on item number five for second reading. Councilman Abdulaziz for second reading.
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to be quick. Um, um, sitting down, especially in my, um, pub, um, DPW Committee meeting, um, sitting down with a traffic engineer, which is Mr. Hung Chow, uh, the, the, the flow of the traffic. He always looks at how the flow of the traffic will be. So since Carroll is going to be a one-way going towards Harrison Street, uh, we're doing Auburn Street a one-way coming from, um, coming from Gawain Avenue to, you know, coming from Governor Street, um, to Broadway. Auburn Street will be a one-way. The engine, traffic engineer did a great study, wouldn't you say, Councilman Velez? Um, to make sure the flow of traffic was kind of running smoothly. So with that being said, thank you, um, DPW Committee, uh, for working with me with this. Uh, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Urdin?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
So, if you notice, it started from Broadway to Governor.
Yeah.
Right? So one thing that Councilwoman probably didn't say is that a lot of these streets are too narrow to have two-way traffic, right? So you will see some changes also from Broadway to Park Avenue because of
Yeah.
too narrow, and you see cars parking the sidewalk, right? So that study is coming soon to be along with the traffic pattern that the other side of Broadway have. It will make it easy for the taxi cab. It will make it easy for the cops when they chasing somebody. Uh, you know, things like, not chasing, following somebody. Yeah, I had to use the right word. But this is needed, and it will put order in order and the traffic that we have in the City of Patterson. Also, the traffic engineer had done a great job in analyzing, analyzing the streets. So my vote is yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number five is hereby adopted on second reading. Number six?
Item number six?
Yes, sir. Next item is item number six for second reading. Public hearing is required. An ordinance amended subsection F, three of ordinance 500 dash 7.1 to decrease the weight of commercial vehicles that are prohibited from parking in the residential districts.
So move.
Department, Department of Public Works, ordinance numbered 2206.
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Abdulaziz, second by, uh, Councilman Urdin, Councilman Velez, and Councilman Mendez. Uh, public hearing is now open.
Move to close.
Now move to, second.
Move to close by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Abdulaziz. Roll call to close the public hearing on item number six, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to close the public hearing, item number six. Council, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Urdin?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Public portion, uh, public hearing?
Hearing, yes, sir. Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. The public hearing is now closed for item number six.
Roll call on item number six, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Roll call on item number six for second reading. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes, this is very, very important. I want to give a shout out to my sixth ward Quality of Life Committee. For the past two or three years, they've been pushing, pushing, pushing to go back to what it used to be. You look at our streets now, and people complain about parking because we have commercial vehicles from other towns coming into our city and parking on our streets, right? I, I can name one street, Illinois Avenue, the paint company, there's some painter, I don't even know who he is, brings all his vans, parks on Illinois Avenue, and that's where they park their cars and they leave. This takes it back, this is, and Madam BA, strict enforcement on this. Put out a crew, and you could probably ticket hundreds of cars when this ordinance passes because it takes up parking from the residents. It's an eyesore for, for, for the areas. And I'm glad that this council's going back to what it was in 2016. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm definitely in full support, Councilman Abdulaziz, about this legislation. Um, that same thing happened also in the third ward. Before my vote, Madam BA, I tried to, I have a text, uh, on East 31st, we have multiple school buses parking at this time. If you could send any unit there, they know that it's illegal. I've been having conversation with a lot of those, uh, company, and people that are driving those buses that are after, that they cannot leave those buses out there. That's overnight, and they should be ticketing towing. Um, East 31st, they are by 165, 167, East 31st, around that area.
Second.
Without being said, my vote is yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Urdin?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think it's a great, um, you know, resolution that we are, ordinance that we are going to adopt today. And I think, since you mentioned the address, I think I should address to our council president that in second ward, if you notice in Total Avenue between Preakness and, uh, Preakness down there, maybe Maketon Ave, it was almost every day, the Comanche will be cool. It's not really a small size, you know, a big size. You know, so.
Yeah.
No, I think with current, current ordinance, you can still can enforce that and with deduction. Not the, this is really.
There's a company on Sherman Ave, they have like seven vans, Comanche of vans.
It's kind of trolley sized, so my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Miss, Councilman Velez?
So, Ruby Kind, today in council meeting at, uh, not council meeting, public safety meeting, put a question on the floor, and I agree on it. Patterson Police Department, we have ordinance, Toyota Superior, what ordinance they pass, what ordinance they amended, because this is a tool for you to apply that ordinance. You don't need to wait for a call from us or anybody out there, because if you see it, the ordinance will support it. So this ordinance is 24 hours, seven days a week. R1 zone and R2 zone. Vehicle over 4,000 and weight, and it's commercial, needs to be addressed. Simply, you don't need to wait to the. Simply, you don't need to wait to the cash system, call you, whatever, you know, I'm not talking to this to office, I'm talking to the air, but, uh, it's ordering in place, twenty-five days from now, it's gonna be implemented, so it's a new tool that you could use to alleviate the parking for the residents. You imagine, Sixth Ward complaining about parking and they got driveways. Third Ward complaining about parking and they have driveways. You imagine the Fifth Ward does not have driveways? So, how difficult is for our residents to get a parking? So, huh, and the Second Ward too. So, my vote is yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number six is hereby adopted on second reading.
Do we have any more items?
One more.
One more?
Number seven.
Yes.
Number seven. Next item, Mr. President and councilmembers, is item number seven for second reading. Public hearing is required. An ordinance amending ordinance number zero seven dash zero zero eight entitled, "Ordinance Prohibiting the Parking of Commercial Vehicles Over Seven Tons Growth Wa- Vehicles Weight Rating Between Nine PM and Six AM in the City of Patterson" to lower the gross vehicle weight rating limit to two tons.
So move.
Second, uh, sorry, sorry.
It's sponsored by Councilman Velez, sponsored by Councilman Abdulaziz, Department of Public Works, ordinance twenty-two zero six five.
Second.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Abdulaziz, second by, uh, Councilman Velez.
See, see no one moved to close?
Public hearing is now open on item number seven.
See no move to close?
Close.
Moved to close by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call for, uh,
Close the public.
Closing the public hearing on item number seven, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Roll call to close the public hearing, item number seven, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mencon?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is six in favor, three absent, the public hearing is now closed for item number seven.
Roll call on item number seven, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Roll call on item number seven for second reading, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes, so, once again, this is going back to what it used to be, and most importantly, there's something in here, council colleagues, that uh, wasn't in any of these ordinances. No recreational vehicle, no RV is allowed to park anywhere in the city of Patterson. They can't sleep overnight on the street, they can't park anywhere, they're not allowed. You want your RV, put on your own property, your own parking lot, um, and, and I've seen some of them pop up in my ward, and, and that's included in this, so. Uh, once again, I wanna thank my Quality of Life Committee in the Sixth Ward that was really spearheading this, and I worked with Councilman Louis Velez to, to, uh, get this through, so my vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mencon?
I know we have to wait twenty-one days before this take effect, but, um, I can go, we, we leave here tonight, you're gonna see a whole bunch of, I mean, a- at least, like, there's just so many out there now, so I'm so happy that, uh, we're finally being able to put this in place, um, because it's just, it's just gotten so out of control, out of hand. Uh, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This definitely is gonna help us to bring those, uh, uh, space to the general public, and, and I will once again give my, give out my number. If you see any commercial vehicle parking overnight, parking in those residential area, reach out to me. Um, you know, we have zero tolerance in the Third Ward for all those commercial vehicles that taking space away from the public. I wanna thank, uh, my, one of my constituents for sending a text about, uh, the buses parking outside. If you have any other issue, reach out to me. Nine seven three, nine three zero, one four three six. Our police department, they're ready to enforce the law and ticket and tow in those commercial vehicles that I'm, that are parking out overnight, just taking space from the general public. So with that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Udine?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think it's a very common issue that we all, the residents, are facing every day. You know, no parking, but commercial vehicles are on our city street. I think we're, you know, accepting this new amendment, I think will give spaces to our residents to park on city street. Since, uh, there is a minimum penalty is mentioned, which is minimum seven, seven hundred fifty dollars penalty, seven hundred fifty to two thousand dollars and ninety days of imprisonment, I would say, you know, if we, you know, enforce the law, I believe that this is going to be very helpful to our, to our residents. And any resident, if you notice that any commercial vehicle parked on the street, since the number, if even small-sized vehicle, will be towed away, because it says four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand pound, which is very like small, uh, for size. If it's commercial, it should not be parked on city street. And with that being said, I think it's a great addition to our, um, you know, so my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Udine, because this is great. The previous ordinance is all day. Residential one, residential two, if you have a commercial plate, if you have a decal, and you don't have commercial plate, it's still considered commercial. So, think about it, parking all day a commercial vehicle in front of your house or whatever. Now, this one, this one here is more interesting. Why? Because it loads the ton to two ton, to, it loads the ton to two tons, is overnight tow trucks, ambulance, school buses, all the above could get towed. And not only that, I increased the fine from a hundred dollars to seven hundred and fifty dollars. First offense, repeated offense is up to two thousand dollars. So, if you come into Patterson, make sure you start renting a lot, a legal lot, to make sure you put your commercial vehicles and tractor-trailers or whatever. Because it's zero tolerance, our residents deserve better, and they need the parking. And we all, soon are coming, like Councilman Mendez, with a citywide parking permit that will be also affecting the city of Patterson soon. Come to the chamber. So, thank you, council colleagues, uh, those that sit in committee and public safety, uh, for this initiative, also enjoying me on it. So my, 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 my vote is yes.
Oh, thank you. Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number seven is hereby adopted on second reading.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Smoke.
Move, moved by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to close the regular meeting of September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Thank you. I'm glad that I'm here to close the meeting, right, Council President? Thank you for keeping me here to the end. But I wanna urge Sixth Ward residents, pick up the, uh, the New Jersey, uh, the record and see a nice article that they highlighted about the Sixth Ward, when we have uh, people from other towns commenting about the growth and the great things happening in our ward, and this is some positivity I wanna share with all of you. So, everyone have a good night, and we'll continue working to make sure the Sixth Ward in the city keeps progressing. Thank you.
You can't build nothing else there, that's why.
Yes.
You can't put nothing else there, you done built all the way up.
Councilwoman Mencon?
You done built all the way up. It's like, you can't put nothing in there no more. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, thank you, huh, Madam. I know, um, uh, Madam Clerk, um, to, to everyone out there, I just wanna say thank you to my council colleagues, um, for supporting, uh, my Lieutenant Sharon Easton with her women's conference that she had this weekend. It was the ideal of Roz Thompson. She's a member with me of New Amy's Line Church, and I tell you, it was phenomenal. I mean, on Sunday, I think there was not one dry ice in the place, 'cause what I find sometimes, there's certain things in the community that we need to do and need to, uh, get together. So I wanna say a job well done to all those that volunteered who, to help Lieutenant Sharon Easton and Roz Thompson for putting this together, and, um, it was outstanding. Also, I have a few events coming up. You know, I'm always here at the city council, you can reach out to me, but the ceasefire, uh, of Patterson is having their luncheon, no, their dinner on October twentieth. If you're interested in coming, please call me. Also, on October twenty-second, I'm having my luncheon with the National Council Negro Women. Please, if you wanna come out, please do. On October first, we're honoring Linda Smith, who daughter has a dance organization called Inner Faith. Uh, if you wanna come out, it's on Saturday, October first, it's gonna be at Mountainside Inn. Um, it's from ten to two. If you're interested, just call me, or Facebook me, or inbox me. Also, on October eighth, uh, Francisca Nunez is doing a domestic violence, uh, where, uh, it's gonna be at ninety-two Washington Street, October eighth, from one to four, uh, one to five, please. All these events that I'm saying that's coming up, they're really good events. Uh, we need to, um, come out to some of them, 'cause they're so very important. Um, and I wanna say to you all out there in the community, um, there's so many things that, that we all, and I can't say that all of us at council people do care about our community. Um, so we just, you know, to say that we do not care, we do. There's certain things that, some of us, uh, sometimes you'll be surprised, sometimes the calls that we do get. Uh, people say we are legislators, I know we're legislators, but sometimes people bring personal, their personal life into with, with, bring us into their personal life to help them figure out uh, where they need to go, what they need to do, and that's fine, because I think that if you're not sure what to do, you need to reach out to someone. I wanna say to my, um, my BA, my, uh, Kathleen, to Javier, my financial, my corporation counsel, I love him, he wrote an excellent, excellent story with Essen Carson. Thank you, amen. I'm gonna cry when I read it, I know I am. And I wanna say, Madam Clerk, thank you. To Secretary Joan, thank you. My council colleagues, you guys know, y'all can call me anytime, anytime, you know that. With that being said, TV Lynn, have a good night. God bless you all. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So before, uh, I make my final comment of the night, I would like to acknowledge our two great police officers that we have, Patterson resident, border resident of the city of Patterson. We have our two great young men, police officers in the city of Patterson. And, um, and I feel very excited when I see my kid that I saw then growing up, now I see them in uniform, patrolling our street, protecting and serving our community. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue and insisting about the great relationship that we have to create between the community and our police department. Now, to all the residents of the Third Ward, we have zero, zero tolerance against all the quality of life issues that we face in citywise. We mentioned the parking issue that we have, commercial vehicle parking in our residential zone. If you have that problem, reach out to your councilmen. Loud music, we cannot policing everything. Let's start being a good neighbor. I've been out throughout the weekend, uh, just having conversation with some of the residents that are, that are facing those issues. Reach out to me. My cell phone number is nine seven three, nine three zero, one four three six. I know we're legislator, but we have to go out there and do the work in the community, and that's what we've been doing. And I'm excited to see all the residents of the Third Ward getting involved. I get a lot of call also from other area. We're here to serve every, per, everybody, but I'm here to, uh, with books on the ground to continue bringing quality of life into the Third Ward, and that's what we're gonna continue doing that. Uh, also, I'm getting a lot of calls about the first-time homebuyer seminar that we put together. Um, and, and they requesting one more. Just give us some time. It was incredible to see way over two hundred people there getting information and learning how to become a homeowner, how to call Patterson home. Um, and I was very excited to see that. Um, and another note in closing, Madam BA, uh, listen, I, I mean, we work really hard, the legislation, to increase the fine for people that are dumping garbage in this tree. Uh, that was one of my fight, we already have that legislation in place. People that are dumping garbage in our community, they could get the fine up to ten thousand dollars. Let's enforce that law. I know we were speaking about having few cameras in different section, so let me remind you all that, if you try to come into the city of Patterson to throw, to dump garbage into our community, and we, and, and, and we, and you get cut, you're gonna have minimum twenty-five hundred dollars, maximum ten thousand dollar fine in court. So, just think about it twice before you do it. We have some section that I will let, I wanna let you know, Madam BA, uh, section that are being, you know, we have people repealing coming into those area to dump garbage there, so we need to put some cameras in those section. Uh, so with that being said, um, good night, Patterson. God bless you all. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Udine?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Patterson, I believe tonight we adopted some very impactful ordinances. One of them, we can mention about the commercial parking vehicle enforcement. Uh, the rules that we, we came up with, which is council body, but enforcement are not on us. We can check to make sure that they're enforcing the law, uh, on the field. If you call police department, and you say it's taking longer, or they are not taking any action, it's not a case in department, but I'm saying that it's not, it's not applying the rules on the, on the field. That's important, so implementation of the rules. So if that happens, I would say, take pictures of those vehicles, post on social media, make, make people aware that these are the companies, they don't care about these rules. And then you will see, I think, uh, you know, it'll, it'll, you know, come to a solution that they are not going to park on our city street. So, with that being said, um, I thank everyone, and I believe, um, our corporation council, you should have, uh, have ordinance that who, how many times you can get uh, chocolate or candies from you. And that should be adapted as well, 'cause Councilman Velez does not probably, how many times he's getting. With that being said, thank you so much for your service, everyone, and my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
Eh, mi hermano carga los dulces. Uh, Madam BA, I just want to, please update us when the recycling center is gonna be open, because we approved money, we approved the site, and the resident needs to take advantage of that recycling site. Um, and it's a long time already. So, update us when we're gonna cut the ribbon there, and call the press for a new, a new press conference. That would be good. I'll be there. Um, Patterson, November se- uh, October second is next.
Sunday.
Uh, Sunday. Um, I gotta say thank you for your donation. You know why? Because you're gonna get your stuff ready, you're gonna get your donation, you're gonna go to East High High School, one fifty Park Avenue, from eight o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night. Councilman Mendez, Councilman Davila, and Council Charlie Kali, and all the councilmen are gonna be there shaking hands, taking complaints, whatever, but bring your donation. The people from Puerto Rico and Dominican Republic will appreciate it a lot. Let's keep Florida in prayers. I just spoke to my daughter. Uh, they're a little bit nervous. Uh, they have a brand-new house, so, you know, and she live in Orlando. So, uh, they're a little bit, uh, concerned about it. Um, once again, Madam BA, uh, thank you for the strict conversation we always have regarding moving the city forward. Um, last but not least, um, Patterson Police, thank you for your service. You have more tools in your hands, you know. Hopefully, I don't have to call a lot, because the books is there. So, Councilman Mendez, thank you. Honest, alright? And Council Ruby Caen, eh, because we stay to the end. We are full-time councilmen's.
We are.
You are. We should get insurance, medical insurance, at least. Councilman Kali, thank you for your service. Uh, but, once again, good night. God bless you all. Pray for each other. Madam Clerk, thank you for your service that you always give us, and the clerks and the secretaries.
Thank.
Um, we love you a lot, and I like that blue on you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, beautiful, by the way.
Did he vote, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, did he vote yet?
I didn't hear the vote.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Good night.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, thank you, my council colleague. It's almost midnight, but we have to do what we have to do. We have to keep moving forward. Thank you, Madam BA, corporation counsel, Mr. CFO, Mister, I forgot your name. Eric, yeah, Eric the Taxi Guy. Thank you for staying with us till, here till, till midnight. Thank you, the officers. Have a good night, everyone. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the vo- the vote is six in favor, the vote is six in favor, three absent. The regular meeting of September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two is hereby adjourned. Good night, everyone. Okay, thank you.